I'd like to call the Monday, August 24, 2015 meeting of the Planning Commission to order. If everybody would please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and welcome to everybody tonight. Tonight's agenda consists of a consent agenda, a public hearing for a planned unit development at White Oak Marketplace, a preliminary plat for the estate at Buffalo Valley, a final plat for the estate of Buffalo Valley, other business, and adjourn. So with that, I will go to the first item on the agenda, the consent agenda, and would ask for a motion to approve.
So move.
Commissioner Wallace, is motion?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Abbott. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Next item will be the public hearing. I'll go through the procedure for a public hearing real quick. I'll open the public hearing, call for exhibits from the city attorney, ask for staff comments. The applicant will be asked to make a presentation. We'll ask for witnesses in favor of the petition, then ask for witnesses that are opposed to the petition, then ask for questions and general discussion from the commissioners, and then I'll close the public hearing and we'll bring it up back to the commissioners for a vote. So with that, I will open the public hearing for the planned unit development concept plan for White Oak Marketplace. As for the exhibits.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At this time, the city has the following exhibits. Exhibit one, staff report with attachments. Exhibit two, affidavit of publication in the Blue Springs Examiner on August 8, 2015. Exhibit three, application with attachments. Exhibit four, the 185-foot notification map. Exhibit five, the names and addresses of property owners within the 185 feet of the site. Exhibit six, copy of the letter sent to said property owners. Exhibit seven, Title IV Land Use Section, Blue Springs Code of Ordinances. And exhibit eight, the 2003 comprehensive plan. Those are the exhibits for the city.
Thank you. Mr. Hawley, you're going to give the staff presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Before you tonight is a request for a planned unit development concept plan by Davidson Architecture with Chris Hafner representing the property owner and developer. The development consists of approximately a 20.53 acre parcel. It's commonly referred to as White Oak Plaza, and it is the shaded, rather than hatched, area shown on the site location map above. The development has a first phase. They've broken it down into three phases. The first phase is approximately 84,300 square feet and includes a grocery store and a 6,000 square foot attached retail space. Second phase is a multifamily senior residential development with approximately 180 units housed in three separate buildings. That's about 60 units per building. The third phase consists of approximately 24,320 square feet of retail restaurant-type use for a total of 114,620 square feet of total retail use on the site. I'm going to switch over to the site plan. We'll start with the black and white site plan. There is a color rendering that you have in your packets, and it's later in the group of drawings, but we'll start with that particular one. Note that the comprehensive plan, the 2003 comprehensive plan designates the property as a commercial property. I think we have that on exhibit one. And the commercial designation then, of course, would align with the general business zoning ordinance. Along with that, of course, there is a residential component to this, and there is, within the 2003 comprehensive plan, there is an opportunity agenda in this particular area, and that agenda calls for clustered development with shared access. Adding the residential component to this through the PUD provisions does implement the current comprehensive plan. I've also made a note here on the 2014 comprehensive plan, and the 2014 comprehensive plan, which is this comprehensive plan, shows the area, not showing up very well on the overhead, but it does show the area as providing for a commercial or retail in the front and residential high-density or at least medium-density residential to the rear of the site. Through the land use analysis section, I am now on page 5 of 11. One of the things to note is that the planned unit development regulations do not allow residential uses in a PUD if they're located on land that the base zoning district is non-residential, which is the case here. So prior to the residential portion of this development coming forward, they will have to rezone that property to a residential designation so that that would be allowed. Again, that's consistent with both the 2003 or current comprehensive plan and the 2014 recently adopted comprehensive plan that will become effective October 5. We're not recommending that any comprehensive plan changes be made at this particular time. Again, the phases, I went over those quickly. There are three phases that were provided by the developer. Should be noted that Phase 2 and Phase 3 really are probably conditioned as much on market conditions as they are timing. But again, for purposes of trying to break it into phases, we know that the grocery store phase and the 6,000 square foot attached retail will be in the first phase, and that's the one that will be proceeding relatively soon. The other two are, we're not sure just exactly when those will come forward at this particular Just going through the staff report quickly, there are some stormwater management conditions that apply. In this particular case, a stormwater management plan will be, needs to be provided prior to the PUD final plan, or with the PUD final plan, I should say. And that's been discussed between the Public Works Department and the developer. They both agreed upon what that plan really should reflect. The open space, the developer really hasn't provided open space calculations, and at this point, it's pretty early to be doing that. If you look at their concept plan, you get a feel for what that open space will be, and I'm quite certain that they will meet the requirements for open space. We simply don't have the numbers at this particular time. They will too be required at the PUD final plan site plan design review point. So that will be back before you. They did provide parking calculations, and the parking exceeds the minimum required by about 13.5 percent. They are required to provide 461, currently are providing 533, and again, this is for the retail portion only. We really don't have enough detail in the residential portion to even provide a good estimate at this particular point in time. They will be meeting minimum setbacks. They will be required to install sidewalk along Southwest 7 Highway as well as Southwest Sunset Avenue. Landscaping. Probably the key thing on landscaping, as is noted on page 9 of 11, I'm sorry, 8 of 11, is that because this is a TIP plan, we will be anticipating that the landscape materials that are provided are a bit larger than our code typically requires. That has been typical with all TIP projects within Blue Springs. Spoke a little bit to the architectural detail, but the architect is here tonight, and I'll let him discuss that in more detail than I. But the final details of the grocery store and the individual freestanding retail buildings will be provided at the time of the PUD final plan. The pad retail buildings, so to speak, will each be required to go through a separate site plan and design review. That will be the case regardless of whether our new ordinance is in effect. In other words, in our new ordinance where we've not required typically site plan and design review for buildings that are 25,000 square feet or under. In this particular case, with this particular PUD, because they've come through at this time, those buildings will be required to come before you for site plan and design review. There's a maintenance agreement that's required. Again, this goes back to common driveways, common parking. Those maintenance agreements will be provided also at the time of the final plan. Staff does recommend approval of the concept plan. It is consistent with the tax increment financing plan. It's also consistent with many discussions we've had with the developer up to this point, and therefore, we are recommending approval with 14 conditions. And with that, I will stand for any questions.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Hawley? Mr. Abbott.
So are any of the existing businesses, are they now going to stay? I mean, I heard really like some, one of the businesses closest to 7 Highway is going to stay.
I'm going to let the developer speak to that because it's our understanding that initially, they are going to clear the site. Now, whether any of those businesses are going to be moved across the street or what, I'm going to let the developer speak to that because I'm just not certain that I know the answer.
Any other question? Yes, Mr. Phillips.
I don't know if you want to talk about this now or if you want to wait till after I hear the presentation from the developer, but can you talk a little bit about how the orientation of the site and everything came around, and what discussions have already been had, and, you know, things like that?
Yes, I can talk a little bit about that. I mean, we've had discussions. This site plan has been before us for quite some time, and we looked at various alternative ways of orienting the building, even talked about pushing the grocery store building closer to the street, hiding more of the parking in the back. Those conversations have been had, but for this particular user and for the amount of retail that they need to get on this site, it's their feeling that this is the way this building has to orient, not only from a visibility standpoint, but just from a functional standpoint as well. And that's how they settled on it, and they can address that further if you'd like.
I definitely will when they get up to that spot. And I didn't see anything as far as the grading that's going to be done on this site, and I understood there was supposed to be quite a bit. Can you?
Yeah, again, I think I'll let the architect explain it, but you're absolutely correct, and they have talked to us about the grading. The site will be graded. They're going, well, I'll let Chris talk about that. Chris is the architect, and he, I'll let him talk some about that.
Okay.
If that's okay.
Mr. Chairman? Yes, Commissioner. Mr. Hawley, has there been a negative impact study done on moving the Price Chopper from the east side of 7 to the west side of 7 Highway?
Right, right. Not to my knowledge was there a negative study done. I think there has been a study done on what the economic benefits of doing this would be, but not, I don't think it was necessarily focused on the negative aspect of what might happen with this move.
Okay, and I assume there'll be a traffic study done?
Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Hawley? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Would the applicant like to come forward and make their presentation? You'll need to state your name, address, and be sworn in, please.
Thank you very much. Hi, I'm Chris Hafner with Davidson Architecture and Engineering. Address 4301 Indian Creek Parkway, Overland Park, Kansas 66207. First of all, thank you so much for-
You need to be sworn in first.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I do.
Good evening.
Thank you for the opportunity to come before you and talk about this exciting project. I know for me, staff, we've been looking at this since 2011, so we're excited to finally be here progressing this plan forward. There's been a lot of work on this site, a lot of issues that we've dealt with, and I think we've come here tonight for the PUD concept plan with a very successful layout, both for the revitalization of White Oak Marketplace and something that's going to sustain itself for the long haul for this development. To walk you through, again, first of all, I'd like to say also thank you to staff for all the meetings that we've had, the open communication that we've had. We really have had a lot of opportunities and several meetings and emails going back and forth about this project to get to this point. So again, I appreciate that time and dedication staff put into this project. Obviously, the driver, the economic driver for this project is the grocery store. We're excited to come forward with something at 85,000 square feet essentially, brand-new, state-of-the-art grocery store, new concept for the Price Chopper that's coming forward, a little bit more unique architecture, not your standard Price Chopper. And that's really driven by the overall developer. They want to see something new and fresh done here, and that's what we're trying to bring, both with the new grocery store and all the associated retail along with it. Some of the key factors that we looked at on this site, and one of the main reasons for looking at White Oak was visibility from 40 and 7, a huge factor. We went through many, many grading exercises with our client to understand what that finished floor elevation would be, where we would set that grocery store, and what it would look like from 40 and 7 at that intersection. So a key component to this project was being able to sell that factor. So how we got to that point was not setting up a standard grocery store where it was going to be as low as possible, save money that way. We were trying to get the building up a little bit more, make it a prominent architectural feature to really draw people from that intersection to this new shopping center. We're accomplishing that by dropping basically where you would find the existing White Oak Shopping Center. We're going to cut in the hill a little bit, and I'll get to the reasoning behind that, and then bring the building up. So you're going to have really good visibility, and we've done a lot of site studies for our client with that. To answer the grading question, it's a great question, it's a big concern. If you've, if you're familiar with White Oak, you understand that parking lot, it's A, it's a sea of asphalt right now, and it slopes off pretty hard to the north and to the east. The other goal aside from visibility that we were tasked with was make sure we have a 2% slope moving from the building out through the parking lot so our customers are safe, we don't have weather issues, and we create a, obviously, a nice, well-lit, flat environment. 2% for people that might not know is basically the accessible ADA minimums that you'd want within a parking stall. We're trying to achieve that across the entire lot so everyone has that same kind of sense of safety moving across that. Obviously, we've got some grade differences and changes happening. We're keeping the signal at the intersection with Highway 7. We're moving that into the site, but instead of kind of taking that road and just shooting it straight through our site, we meander it a little bit. We try to get more of the field of parking in front of the grocery store and also slow traffic down. You can see, obviously, we're coming back in with a lot of landscape islands, a lot of green space, a lot of pedestrian connections. You know, to talk more about it, you can look on your rendering there. You can see we've got new sidewalks along 7 and along Sunset for the portions of the property we control, obviously. We really felt like the building orientation set us up best to give us great visibility from 7, also from 40, but also put our loading areas and our docks. As we're digging back in, there is a pretty good grade change between this development and I think it's Mall of Fall Creek to the south of us. We've already got a good grade change there. We've got even more, and we thought what a great place to be able to get truck delivery and things like that happening back behind this grocery store. Again, worked with staff really hard on the connection between the residential and the commercial portions of this. Jim was very instrumental and came up with a great idea of how to kind of mitigate truck traffic from moving back to the south if there was ever a connection made with the Mall of Fall Creek. We do have accommodation for that, but obviously, their site would then have to connect up to their property line. But we do have that connection made, and we basically set up a big kind of loop there so trucks wouldn't be able to turn and head south into the other retail development. They'd stay basically back within our site, and we do provide enough truck turning radius in the back that basically the southernmost access point will really be a truck-exclusive access point. We further developed that by not allowing a quick access off of that southernmost point into that proposed drive-through that we have or that parking lot there. So it's really a dedicated drive for that. We really wanted to focus on the entry point along the front of the building where we're going to have a number of crosswalks and try to control traffic and slow it down with the use of medians and things like that that we're going to try to do through that area. I'm sorry, crosswalks is what I meant, not medians. And then the main drive that all kind of tie back into the proposed residential portion of this project. We work with staff. We had multiple access points on Sunset. We consolidated those down, created the detention area that Ben and the rest of the Public Works staff and I worked to kind of come up with some concepts there. We feel like this meets that, and we're just excited for the site layout, the project. Again, Phase 1 would be the grocery store and the retail that's attached directly to the east of it, as well as, you know, the required parking fields and access points off of 7 and off of Sunset. We will be, basically, for anything future, we'll be setting those up with utilities to those locations, pad site-ready, and we'll be obviously marketing those pretty quickly as construction moves forward. So from a timeframe, we're hopeful to get this PUD concept plan approved and move on to the next step of the final site plan for the first phase and get the civil engineering going, start getting bids, and get this project under construction. Architecturally, like I said, you might have to help me, Jim. I don't know where. There we go. This is just a very quick concept of what the grocery store could look like. We met with staff and went over two or three options. We kind of fell in love with this look. Our client did as well. We presented all of those back to them, and they really felt like something in this genre with a lot of wood, some bricks, some stone, a lot of glass, would really kind of be a departure away from the typical grocery store, which is what we're not trying to be here. So this is the look. We've got outdoor patio spaces for lunch or dinner or whatever else you want to do with the grocery store. We've got multiple little plaza areas that kind of happen around the site in front of this, a lot of wide walkways and a lot of good pedestrian connections. So with that, Mike Fishman, who is one of the owners of this project, Development Associates, is here, and I might let Mike speak to the question about prior businesses and who's going to stay and go.
You'll need to, thank you, and you'll need to state your name, address, and be sworn in as well.
All right. My name is Mike Fishman. My address is 10985 Cody, Suite 220, Overland Park, Kansas 66210, and I'll be sworn.
So I'm just worried the testimony about to give in space, do you choose something?
I do. Good evening, planning commissioners. Thank you for the attention that you've given to this project. We're really excited that we're now getting to the place where the project is going to be actually moving on. In answer to, I think it was Commissioner Abbott that asked a question concerning the businesses that were there, there are three remaining tenants, Dollar General, Radio Shack, and Beauty Brands. I think that's all. Right now, as it stands right now, none of them will be in the new project. There's a possibility that they may approach us or we may enter into negotiations with one or more of them to use our additional, our retail that we're putting in other than the grocery store, but right now, there's been no negotiations. Pretty simple.
Yeah, like I said, there was rumor originally that Beauty Brands is going to stay there, so I'm just curious.
Initially, Beauty Brands wanted to stay. They told us that it was a successful store, they wanted to keep the location. Since then, there's been some changes apparently at Beauty Brands. I think their ownership has changed, or at least management has changed, and their direction, I believe, is to not stay on Highway 7, but possibly, I'll only be guessing, but I can only imagine that maybe they'd be looking at the Adams Dairy Project. Anything else?
Commissioner Banks.
Yes, sir. I would like to know, do you have a letter of commitment from Price Chopper for this grocery store?
Well, not necessarily a letter of commitment. I can tell you that the Cosentino family that operates the grocery store is a majority in ownership of the Development Associates, which is the developer. They are fully committed to the project, and the planning for the project is ongoing. I know that there's concern from time to time that the project is not going to go forward as a new grocery store. If that's the case, nobody's told me, and we are, and I don't mean to be sarcastic about it, the fact of the matter is that the project is moving forward. Did I not answer your question sufficiently?
Is that with or without another Price Chopper?
With a Price Chopper, yes. The Price Chopper will be there.
Mr. Chairman? Commissioner Phillips has to end up first.
Can we go back to the existing businesses for a minute? Has there been any kind of accommodation to them for, putting it bluntly, kicking them all out of their locations? And I have heard directly from Beauty Brands that they are not relocating, they're shutting that store down.
Okay. Yes, we have had extended negotiations with all three tenants, and the negotiations were not productive, and the city council has authorized the developer to use eminent domain in order to condemn and acquire the leasehold interests, and that process is ongoing at the moment.
Commissioner Field.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Fishman, the, I'd like to make a comment. I think this center or the White Oak has needed this for a long time. It's been underutilized for a long time. It's a very nice development. One question, or I actually have two questions. The two buildings to the southwest beside the grocery store, are those designated retail or what are those going to be?
To the southwest?
Yes.
Okay.
Marked in red.
Those are part of the residential development.
Those are.
Yes. So essentially, from, basically, that's why I tried to color-code it. Everything red is residential. Everything blue and the different shades of blue are commercial in nature.
Okay, I thought there were three buildings that had the residential units. It's stated in the preliminary plan. I assume the three buildings are at the top, but I was kind of curious what the two buildings below were.
I think that we're considering, and again, because this is a PUD concept, I'm not the architect or designer for the residential portion. This is merely a representation of some sort of senior living care facility. So maybe, Jim, and you might help me out here, I think maybe Building 1 would be considered the top building because they are connected, and then the two buildings on the southwest would be 2 and 3.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Mr. Hafner. Again, Mr. Fishman, the, is there any designated retail in there already? I mean, do you have retail already picked out for that, or?
No, not yet. When we get closer to actually starting construction and we know what our construction schedule will be, we will be actively marketing the retail adjoining the grocery store and also the one that's right along 7 Highway. And hopefully, we'll be able to lease that space.
Okay, two more questions. On the east side of the grocery store, that, I assume that's going to be pharmacy? No?
Chris, if you will. Sure. We're in discussion still with that. On the east side of the grocery store, actually, that is the attached 6,000 square foot retail. And then we've got fast casual dining shown to the southeast there. We haven't worked the final details of how a pharmacy will or will not work into this plan, but we're going to be working with the interior layout with the Price Chopper team to understand how we can get that to work and not affect our parking field or traffic flows and things like that.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hafner. Also, one last question. The restaurant, has that been identified?
It has not, but we have got some good market analysis back on that. There's been some good interaction with other brokers. I've actually sent this plan off to some other people to start taking a look at that, and we feel that that site's a pretty good use and good destination point for that fast food facility, but no one to date. I'll just say, the only thing we know for sure is that we're putting in the Price Chopper, and we're building the 6,000 square foot building for lease for multi-tenant use.
Okay, thank you, gentlemen.
Commissioner Abbott?
Is there any idea what we could do with the existing Price Chopper?
It will be leased. It will be repositioned as retail. But again, we haven't aggressively marketed the existing Price Chopper building because we're really not sure when we can deliver it. But we're relatively confident that it will be replacement retail. We've had conversations with some potential users, and we're just repositioning that building as retail.
Commissioner Banks?
That was my question. Thank you. Take my question.
Any other questions for the applicants? Mr. Phillips?
I don't have questions. I have some serious comments, but I'm waiting to hear everything else before I get into that, so.
Okay. No other questions from the commissioners?
Thank you.
Thank you.
If I could add, we did go over, I know, I like to do this with recommendations, we did read all 14 recommendations and we're in agreement with that.
You're in agreement with the 14 conditions? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak in favor? Yes, sir. If you'd come forward and state your name, address, and be sworn in?
I didn't know, I had to pick a side. I just wanted to add a comment. Steve Solzer with Central Bank of the Midwest, which were the corner up there that's not part of it.
Could you?
Do you want me to?
Name, address, and sworn in, please.
Okay, Steve Solzer, and address is of our branch, there's 909 South Seventh Highway in Blue Springs, Missouri.
And really, the main part of me being here, there wasn't a lot of timing to have too much dialogue yet, but we just had some concerns currently and for the past maybe 25 years, we've had the ability for customers to come up to the light just south of our branch. And by the drawing that we hadn't looked at, it looks like we're all cut off from there. So there'd be no way for any of those, that flow to go north, basically.
So I just want to take the opportunity to at least interject that, being a concern, but we're excited for something to happen on the property. That's really all I have.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else that would like to speak in favor of the petition? Seeing none. Any that would like to speak in opposition of the petition? Nobody? Okay, thank you. Any other discussion from the commissioners to go on record? Yes, Commissioner Billups?
I guess this would be the time.
Okay.
I'm trying to frame my comments here correctly. I've been really excited about the idea of White Oak being redeveloped for a long, long time, and knowing that the city was actively pursuing this and everything else, and Price Chopper moving across the street. It was always my understanding in hearing anything about those conversations that the city was going to aggressively make some accommodations to the businesses that were going to have to be relocated in the process. I'm very, very disappointed to hear that nothing is going to happen to them. They're just being kicked out through eminent domain or whatever. And that one of them, at least, and probably all of them, are not returning to town. I really, in my mind, had this whole thing oriented towards Seventh Highway. I did not have it oriented towards Sunset. It just seems like we're really replacing what we've got with something that's laid out exactly the same way, just with newer buildings, newer, larger buildings, and without the enclosed strip around the corner. It doesn't impress me as being something new and wonderful. It just looks like a revamp of the same old thing. And it doesn't, it doesn't give me a good face to Seventh Highway. And you say you've talked about how visible it will be from Forty and Seven, and I just don't see how it will be visible at all from Forty and Seven with all the existing buildings and everything else. It looks like you've cut off the access from the bank, was it Metcalf? It's not Metcalf anymore. It's?
Central Bank.
Central Bank.
Central Bank.
Of coming into that parking lot at all. You've stopped the straight through going across on Sunset from the parking lot into the existing center that's to the north. I just don't see the flow, and I'm just not happy with the orientation and the layout of the whole thing. Love for somebody to tell me where I'm missing something, but I just don't see any of that. And I really, and see this as being, we're going to get a new grocery store and then we're going to have an empty lot where the senior housing may someday show up and the other retail buildings may someday show up, and we've been through that before. I just need more that we're going to get something else other than just the bigger grocery store.
If I may?
If you'd like to address these concerns, yes.
I do a lot of large-scale land planning of retail development sites, and I don't say that to be proud of it. It's just something our firm does. The reason, I mean, White Oak was dated, obviously.
Absolutely. I'm not arguing that point at all.
White Oak was dated, and the thing that sites like White Oak lack is because they're so deep, I mean, it's a 20-acre site. Because they're so deep, the draw to get all the way back into that site needs to be something spectacular. I've drawn on this site, we had a community center on here at one time. We've had multiple, multiple things on this site since 2011. What we wanted to do was make sure we could provide a successful project back to the city of Blue Springs, and that meant not trying to take people so deep back into the site with the retail that we'd have to infill all the way back up to Seven with all of these little retailers. So what we were able to do, what we found, was a potential partner to take about, six acres of the site.
Six point six.
Six point six acres of the site on the backside that allows a mix of uses, which we're excited about. It's not purely residential or purely commercial play. It provides a little bit of vitality, a little bit of life, and it really energizes the sidewalk network and the pedestrian pathways and the use of these different things. I mean, I envision with the sidewalks we have and the opportunities, some restaurants, some things like that, that are more than just your standard strip retail type uses. That's how we're going to market this, and I think the architecture speaks to that. And I think what we're trying to do, again, is keep that action out along the frontage. Taking that building, in my opinion, to disagree, I apologize, but to take that building and turn it 90 degrees to face Seven would have pushed it even farther back into the site and not have had as much presence on Seven. So what we tried to do was get it pushed as far east as possible, get it along Seven, still provide some retail opportunities along that east frontage, and then we've got another building sitting there, and then we've got the Signal and a nice new pylon sign. The building, between all of us here, the building I'm worried about is the one on Sunset. It doesn't have as much visibility, but I think, in my opinion, doing this quite a long time, I feel like everything along Seven is going to lease up really well, and it's going to keep that corridor activated instead of trying to draw people all the way back into the heel of a shopping center where you have a, you know, what was there originally of the Dollar General that didn't draw people in. So I think the parking lot design and kind of the mix of uses that we're trying to provide on the site really is going to engage us in a lot better way. I hope that was a counterpoint.
Could you address the concern with the access to the bank as well?
Yeah, you know, again, going back to what our number one goal on this was, visibility for our client and safety of the parking lot. Right now, there's access there because the site is a big asphalt field that slopes right into their parking lot. Quite honestly, it slopes in there and I'm sure a lot of stormwater runs into their site. What we're trying to do is set up, again, a parking lot that's elevated, that gets back up to the finished floor level of the grocery store, and still gets us access points from the signalized intersection, which we're not moving, and then the designated access points we have along Sunset. I did get to talk to Steve earlier today. I put him in contact with our client, and I think we're going to have discussions like, is there a way to get them access? How steep is it going to be? Is that going to be acceptable to both parties? But I will say, in the end, our number one goal is to make sure the site is graded, the stormwater detention works, and then we will look at those things, obviously, to be good neighbors and make sure all of that works. But to be fair, there's no cross-access agreement on file. We do want to be good neighbors, though. We want to make sure that we work with them to see if there's an opportunity there. But if the grades don't work and it's too steep for them, they still have an opportunity to go out on the Sunset and come back, although there's a way to get back on the site, I should say, multiple access points on Sunset if they really needed to get that intersection if we can't get that deal worked out. But I'm here to tell you, we're going to get the grading plan done and see how we can get an access point to work that doesn't affect how that stormwater kind of flows through that section of the site.
Okay. Any other questions while the applicants still up there? Commissioner Banks?
I'm just concerned because he just mentioned that the water runoff, there's a lot of water runoff on the site now, but you're going to elevate the Price Chopper, so the land, so there'll be even more water runoff. So you're going to address that with the city? Is that what you just said?
I said, right now, well, right now, there's nothing stopping the water. Right now, that water is just sheet flowing off of the parking lot at a steep grade down to that kind of low point, which is really where, just north of the signalized intersection, which is where everything flows. What we've worked with staff on is, okay, we're adding a lot of islands, we're adding a lot of storm sewer pipe and things like that to contain and collect that water. We're also putting in a detention basin to hold that water and release it at a slower rate into the public system instead of just across into the park, other people's parking lots or into the public street like it's doing right now. So this is going to be a vast improvement of stormwater quality and detention on the site.
I just have one more concern.
Yes, Commissioner Banks?
Ingress and egress, well, I guess you can get on and off the road, Sunset over there, but I do see that there is a median there now, and I saw that in the plans that they were going to put a median. I'm just concerned with, with, losing three businesses, I don't want to lose a fourth.
You're referring to the bank?
The bank. Because they've been there quite a while, and for them to be able to not have their customers access that since they're being basically cut off, this is their way in and out from Seventh Highway.
Correct. I mean, well, they have the one, but like you say, there's a median.
Right. There's a median now, and we've dealt with medians and affected other businesses. I just don't want to see another one affected. I mean, there's a way around it, but I think we need to look at that.
Is that some, Mr. Holly, is that something staff has looked at with the applicants?
I'm not, I'm not... Okay, I got this one. I'm not clear, Lynn, are you talking about along Seventh Highway? Or are you talking about Sunset?
Sunset does not have the median.
Right, it does not.
It's Seventh Highway that has the median on Sunset.
Right. And Seventh Highway currently has a median that allows a left in, a right in, a right out, but not a left out, and that won't change.
But with the, excuse me.
Go ahead.
But with the current arrangement, if someone does need to make a left out, they have access into the parking lot to get to the light to make the left turn. They're losing that.
Yes, and as it would operate based on the current plan without changes to configuration that Chris was talking about, they would have to go back out to Sunset, come in through one of the drives of the center, and then go to the main drive back to the light. Or they would have to go down Sunset and go to 10th and make that loop. But there would be a loop there. But they're really, regardless of how the property redevelops, if you're ever looking for an opportunity for a left onto? Lowdown would not let that happen. So the cross-access, if the grades work, you can... If the grades work, you know, then obviously the opportunity would be there. If they don't, and that would be true with any development that came in.
So not necessarily with this project, any project that comes along, if the grading doesn't work, that cross-access won't work?
And I think we can safely say that no matter what development goes at White Oak, grading will be an issue.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for the applicant?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other discussion amongst the commissioners before I close the public hearing?
I'm sorry, I'm just disappointed. I had such higher anticipation in my, than what I'm seeing here, and it's...
Okay.
I'd like to add a comment, too.
Yes, Commissioner Field?
I'm kind of in concert with Commissioner Phillips on the point about the senior living. I think that really makes the development more of a development. I mean, if you have a grocery store standing there for two to three years or something like that, then we haven't really gained anything, in my opinion. So I would really like to see that senior center come forward. I don't know whether there's going to be memory care or whether assisted living or independent living. Mr. Fishman, do you want to address that?
Yes, Commissioner Field, the senior living will be, it's age restricted, 55 and older. It will be built in three phases. It will total 180 units, 300, and it's proposed to be 243 additional residents in that part of town to use the grocery store and the surrounding businesses and the retail and restaurants that are there. And it, the city council just voted to approve a letter of support to the state for tax credits, and we are highly optimistic that the first phase of the senior housing will be built at the same time that the grocery store gets built.
Okay, that's good. What about memory care? Is there any address on that?
No, this is independent living, so there will be, there'll be no memory care there. This is, these are one and two-bedroom units for, with each of the, each of the phases will have its own recreation area. Each will have, I think they have a gym, they have, I can't recall the other, you know, like coffee place and that sort of thing. So each will be in a library, each will be standalone.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Fishman.
Thank you. I want you to, we've just been through this with the city council. These are, this senior living will be as high-quality and high standards as multifamily is anyplace. They are absolutely high-quality and beautiful.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Saying none, I will close the public hearing and open it up for discussion with the commissioners. Anyone?
I have a comment.
Yes, Commissioner Wallace?
You know, I can, I hear what you're saying, you know, but I feel like it is a step forward, at least it's progress, something's going to be there, and it's just going to, and it is, it's the preliminary concept approval.
Could you speak into the mic, Commissioner Wallace? We can't hear you. Thank you.
I'm sorry. I was about to go to sleep over here. No, I agree with you, Ken, in what you're saying, especially about the three businesses. And my concern is the access to that bank because I have, I use that bank a lot, and I go out that way, you know, so that, I have to think that there'll be a way to figure that out. But at least this is a step forward, I see, and we are just in a concept plan here, you know, and we'll get other shots at it. I guess that's my take on it.
I'm just afraid that we take the wrong step forward and then we're stuck with something else for another... with something else for another 20 or 30 years, that-
Yeah. But it's, it, it also kind of goes along with what we've been working on as far as getting the walkability and the residential and the commercial and everything all together.
Well, yes, the mixed, and, and, the senior housing aspect of the plan, as we kept hearing about it, you know, throughout the last several years, I always thought that was a good thing. I was very excited about that part of it. And I know you're, we're just looking at, you know, squares on a, on a page here, but what I'm seeing is a very cold block of apartment building with no, no green around it, no amenity there, it just looks like a very sterile place to expect someone to want to live in a sea of asphalt. It may be very high-end on the outs, on the inside, it just, and, and I know, it's all gonna be when we see the actual plans for the actual buildings, but that's just the impression that I get from this drawing, that if it weren't for this interior courtyard, there'd be absolutely nothing to entice me to want to move into a, you know, a building like this. And like I said, I, I just, I, I really wanted a very high-end grocery store that faced Seven Highway. I don't, I, it didn't have to be all the way back to the back end of the lot, it can be, you know, halfway back with the housing behind it, I just, I thought it would be facing Seven Highway and fronting Seven Highway, because I always thought that was one of the problems with White Oak, was the fact that it didn't face Seven Highway, that it, you know, the only thing that faced Seven Highway is beauty brands, and that was only as an afterthought, after somebody came in and took out part of the, the original grocery store that was there and turned it around. And I think it's been very successful because it did have that front-facing piece that the 6,000-square-foot building and the fast-food restaurant are gonna completely block any, any architectural quality that the grocery store's gonna have from Seven Highway. That's just the way I see it. I, I, I see us, you know, and on the other building, we're gonna have the back of it to Seven Highway. Depending on how it's done, that can be a nice thing, or that can be a really bad thing. We've got several strips where we've got the backs of the buildings facing the street now, that are basically a brick wall with a couple of service doors in them. That's not, you know, that's not what I want on Seven Highway. So it's just not the vision that I had when I listened to the city talk about it and all the things that were gonna be done to get everybody excited about this.
Commissioner? Councilman Edmondson, did you want to comment?
I hate to, hate to jump in on this, but I, I feel that the council has seen some of the illustrations and has, has a presentation as far as the quality of the multifamily. What you're seeing here on this illustration that you have in front of you is not what we saw. What we saw was a much higher quality, very appealing façades, very upscale-looking. There's some examples that were built in North Kansas City, they showed as references, that are very classy-looking, so the only reason I'm jumping in here is I don't want you to run off and think that that, what you're gonna see is just, you know, multi-story, plain frontage, it's a very appealing, what they're offering, or what they're suggesting offering is very appealing, very stylish, very high-quality. So I just want to interject that part of it. As council, we have seen some of this stuff that maybe hasn't come before you yet, so there is a high-quality area going in for that, for the senior.
I appreciate that, I wish we could've seen it. If you've, if you've seen drawings and renderings, I wish we could've seen them also. That's, it would, it would ease my mind a little bit in that respect.
Did the applicant want to, did you want to come back up and address?
I was just going to make the exact same point that Councilman-
Could you come up to the, so we can, so we can hear you, please?
Sure. I was gonna make the exact same point that Councilman Edmondson made. It's unfortunate, you see a blocked diagram with just, just blobs on it, and it, it doesn't do justice, Commissioner Phillips. This is, as, as Councilman Edmondson said, a really, really upscale, attractive place that if you saw it, and unfortunately, it's really not at that stage, I mean, this, this particular, we're, we're just dealing with a concept plan here. If, if I knew that that was important to you, we certainly would've had it. I want you to rest assured that it will be the highest quality, something that the city would be proud of.
Thank you. And, Mr. Hawley, we, prior to that, the, through a site plan and design review, we will see those, correct?
Absolutely.
Okay.
They will have to do a, they will have to-
They actually, for the residential portion, will have to do a final PUD plan as well as site plan and design review, so they will go through that, that process.
Thank you.
Yes, Commissioner Haney?
I'd just make one comment, just general information, that the Casentinos are, Price Chopper's locally owned, it's not Walmart coming from out of town and sucking up some money, going elsewhere, it is local people that's been in this area for a long time.
Well, they're my favorite store, too. I, I mean, that's where we shop all the time. I'm not, I'm not knocking Price Chopper at all in, in what I'm saying.
Well, I'm just waiting. Well, I'll, I'll make a motion, let's throw it up against the ceiling and see if it sticks.
Okay, Commissioner Wallace?
I'll make a motion for approval for the PUD concept plan, PUDC-07-15-4920 with the staff recommendations.
I have a second.
I have a motion, do I have a second? Is it Commissioner Peel? I'm sorry.
That's correct, sorry.
And any more discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, this will be a roll-call vote.
Commissioner Abbott?
Aye.
Commissioner Wallace?
Aye.
Commissioner Haney?
Aye.
Commissioner Peel?
Aye.
Commissioner Bartolata?
Aye.
Commissioner Phillips?
Sorry, I just can't, no.
Commissioner Banks?
No.
Chairman Graham?
Aye.
We will recommend this to the city council. All right, next item on the agenda is, I'm throwing things now, got me all excited. Is the preliminary plat for the estates, the estate at Buffalo Valley, and it's like, it's a one-man show tonight with Mr. Hawley, he's gonna be- Yes. -presenting that to us as well.
Yes, I get the honor of that as well.
Yes, can we combine the preliminary and the final plat with your presentation?
I'm glad you were asking and recommending, because yes, we will, I think that's a great idea.
Thank you very much.
They are very, very much the same, including, including the number of conditions. So again, the applicant is requesting approval of a preliminary plat and at the same time, a final plat for the estates at Buffalo Valley. The property is located at south, north of southeast Wyatt Road and south of Willow Tree Subdivision, it's east of southeast Adams Dairy Parkway, and west, on the west side of southeast Cook Road. Consists of approximately 82.3 acres, and the applicant is proposing two lots. You may recall, this is, this is very close to Anna Estates, which was, I believe, just north of this particular property, came through and asked for, it was a very similar request in that they wanted to plat the property for a single-family home, that is exactly the intent of, of the owner of this property, and because there is a distance between the sanitary sewer and the property, they will be requesting the onsite system, and as you can see in previous actions and approval on February 17th of 2015, the city council approved an ordinance that made provisions to allow for those onsite systems under certain conditions. The prop, this, this property is currently zoned AO, which is, is a, I'm sorry, AG, which is a county agricultural zoning. We're not requesting that they change the zoning, they're developing it in a way that would be similar to what we would call our residential estates, and that would be very similar to what Willow Tree currently is zoned. So we are not requesting that they rezone the property in any way, they will be developing it in a very similar fashion as Willow Tree. The applicant was asked to provide easement for the expansion of Cook Road in the future, and they have provided that on the final plat. It is approximately, my recollection is 20 feet that they have dedicated for additional right-of-way in case Cook Road is expanded in the future. They have also, were requested to provide a 15-foot sanitary sewer easement along the west property boundary, that is shown on the final plat as well. The declaration of restrictions on the use of land, it had to do with the onsite disposal system, with easement access covenants running with the land, that has been provided to the city, signed by the property owner. So in essence, they have met those conditions, and staff is recommending approval of the preliminary plat with five conditions, as well as the final plat with five conditions. And as you can see in looking at those conditions, several of them have been met, for instance, excuse me, the, the condition number four, the declaration of restrictions and the agreement that has been provided to the city, so I guess that's really the, the main one. With that, I'll stand for any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Hawley? Yes, Commissioner Abbott?
Yes, so this is one residence?
Yeah, single-family home. What they're doing is taking this lot, and they're, this 82-acre piece of ground, and they're subdividing it. It will be two parcels, one that is three, three-acre plus-or-minus parcel, and then the remaining will be, will be, remain agricultural type of use, and they're, they're proposing to build one home.
Any other questions? Yes, Commissioner Phillips?
We've gone around this, I just want to make sure, the, the house is going on Lot One correctly? Is that correct?
Yes, let's look at the-
The smaller lot.
Yes, that is correct, that is correct, and let's look at the plat.
Yeah, I, I know, but nobody actually said the house is going on Lot One, they just said the house is going on one lot, they didn't say-
No, it is going on Lot One, it's the smaller lot that they're placing the house on.
And the only access to this Lot Two is off of Cook Road, there isn't an access that backs up to the Parkway or anything like that?
That's correct. Thank you.
Were there any other questions from anybody, from Mr. Hawley? I guess, huh? Would the applicant like to say anything?
We're just grateful to be here, we're excited.
Come up to the, state your name and address, please.
Okay. My name is Cam Compton, my current address is 1106 Northwest Meadow Court, Grain Valley, Missouri, 64029. We're grateful to have this opportunity to come before you tonight, we are hopeful this project will go forward, we are excited to build, I am a fourth-generation farmhand on this farm, so we are excited to bring our family to Blue Springs, to get to have our little boy grow up on a farm, to experience all the things that come with farming, and we are just really looking forward to getting this house built.
Thank you. Any questions?
I have one question.
Commissioner Peel?
I'm sorry.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Are there any ideas of extending some of this property to residential?
The 80 acres, I assume you're talking about?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Not at this present time, as there is no sanitary sewage system available, and as there is no other road access other than Cook, it doesn't really lend itself at this point to go ahead and be residential at this time.
Okay, so there's no plan to develop that property, then?
No, we will farm it till the sun goes down.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Phillips?
That was my question.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Banks? Would you like to say something?
I, I'd like to make a motion.
Would you? Okay.
Having grown up 160 acres, I'd be happy to do this. The estate at Buffalo Valley, the preliminary plat, I'd like to approve case file, PP-07-15-4921, I believe there's five staff conditions.
Second. I have a motion from Commissioner Banks and a second from Commissioner Phillips. Any other discussion on the preliminary plat? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Would you like to continue?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair, I'm getting excited. Okay, and then, again, the estate at Buffalo Valley, the final plat, and it's PF-07-15-4922 with the five staff conditions.
Second. Second from Commissioner Peel. Any discussion on the final plat? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that recommendation will be sent to the city council, so, thank you.
Thank you.
That brings us to other business. Does anybody have any other business? Mr. Allen?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Trebe brief, considering the late hour, late in relatively speaking. The next planning commission meeting is September 14th, we have one, so it's three weeks from tonight, we do have a fifth Monday next week, so September 14th, is that a special day for Commissioner Banks?
Excellent.
I will be out of town, so Commissioner Banks will be filling in that night.
That will be special, excellent.
So be kind to her.
Yes, absolutely, no, it should be fairly straightforward, we have Adams Point-
Village.
Village, Adams Point Village, which is off Artemis slash Coronado, just east of the golf course. They've done one phase of that, larger lot, single-family subdivision, they're moving forward with the next phase, both a final plan and a final plat, so look forward to seeing that on the 14th, that's the only approval-type agenda item. We will also be presenting a general, I guess, training, education, formation session on the new UDC. So we'll get you kind of trained up a little bit as to what to start expecting coming in October, so. You'll be our guinea pigs, as usual, so we'll be trying that out at that time, and then we'll be doing the same with city council. At the planning commission meeting, we are intending, we're anticipating inviting some of the other boards and commissions as well, so you may see some of the Board of Adjustment, Development Advisory Commission, some of those folks may also be in attendance just for that part of the, the meeting, so. With that, I'm also noticing that the following meeting, which is September 28th, naturally is the one Monday night football game for the Chiefs, so, it's at 7:30, so we'll see what the agenda looks like by then, a couple weeks yet before that cutoff, so we won't know what's scheduled for that Chiefs night, but it's 7:30, so hopefully we can get things turned around, even if there is something within an hour. Do you want to top it, save the date at this point?
Well, I think-
Okay.
We currently are looking at a planning commissioner training, the Eastern Jackson County Planner Commissioner Training, and currently, we are looking at September the 29th, which is a Tuesday evening, it would be the typical five to eight, but you, well, I wish you would save that date. At our next planning commission meeting, we'll have a lot more details, and there is a chance that that may be moved to November, depending on our speaker's schedule, we haven't gotten those nailed down and confirmed, so I wanted to give you that, save the date, and ask you to put that on your calendar, and we'll confirm that up just as soon as we have confirmation through email, and we'll mention it again at the next commission meeting.
Okay, great, thank you. Any other business? Commissioner Phillips?
Well, once again, as the final notice before it happens, September 12th, on Saturday, is the Taste of Blue Springs with the Historical Society at the High School Commons, from four to eight, and I meant to bring the tickets with me this evening, and I didn't. I do have tickets at my office, and I'd be glad to meet with any of you at any time to get them to you, they're $10 in advance, $12 at the door. They have-
Per person?
Per person, they have over 30 restaurants signed up, and many, many raffle items that they'll be rappelling off, and you'll get raffle tickets, not only for a donation to the society, but also for a donation of food to the Community Services League, so.
Great, thank you. Any other business? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved. So moved.
I have a motion, and a, from Commissioner Phillips, and a second from Commissioner Banks, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned, thank you.